And we're going to come through a committee to discuss the calling on the Scirion Farm Village Master Plan. Um, I wonder maybe if there was probably filming, um, I remember one of that filming, uh, in the, um, getting in anyone's way or to focus on other members of the public, then, uh, that is fine, um. So our first just run through the agenda, so. The last officers, cabinet members and members of the committee to the meetings are, and will take any apologies and declarations of interest. I will then ask, um, the member who submitted the call in to speak right. For the rest of the meeting, we will be scrutinising the responses to each of the questions put forward in the call-in form of time. For each call-in response, we will take questions from members. With any remaining time, I will have two questions. I will then go to a vote on that specific question. At this point, I'll then go to the set for the next question. In the end, I will summarise the outcome of those votes, um, and we will go forward. This meeting is scheduled to run for up to two hours. I believe all the questions raised in this call-in mean I would have had enough time to be scrutinised, so I will keep this meeting to time. In due time then, I would like to allow any questions from the public as time allows. And therefore answer questions, um, questions to be succinct, um, please don't repeat questions, um, give speeches, um, so we try not to go beyond two minutes, um. I expect members of the public to remain polite, listen sincerely to the author's responses, and respect everyone else in the room and the democratic process. The public can ask questions at my discretion, I have every intent to allow this. But if there are issues, um, I can remove this, I have to see all everyone. I understand this is an important subject, and their non-strong opinions, please remain respectful, and I'm expecting to progress. Well, let's just go around the table and, um, do introductions. Libby Hughbill, Department of Public Affairs.
Hi, this is K W Leedrum, Deputy Director of Government.
I'm David, this is Director of Government. Cabinet Head of Planning, Goals, Strategy and Environment. And the Viewers is the Director of Government. Or I am the Director of Government.
And the Casey Head of Government.
Or Richardson, Head of Skills and Employability with Responsibility for School Place Planning.
David Nelson, Printable Ben Rollins, Cabinet Head.
James Hewitt, Department of Policy Office.
Councilor of Government, Cabinet Number three sources.
Uh, Bernard Rowan, Cabinet of Government.
Uh, James Neil, Cabinet of Government.
James Coe, Cabinet of Government.
Josh Henderson, Cabinet of Government.
Ian O'Sullivan, Cabinet of Government.
Chris O'Farrell, Cabinet of Government.
Al Martin, Cabinet of Government.
Kirsty, Cabinet of Government.
Jerry, Cabinet of Government.
Um, I am the Secretary of Government, Cabinet of Government and Ben Hough. Do we have any declarations of interest? Come on, then.
Uh, this chair, not, not so much declarations of interest, but because I chaired planning committee, I totally were advised through Mr Swinall, um, in light of the, um, information that's been gathered today, there would be no conflict that we stay for this meeting.
And he, uh, taking that advice, uh, taking that clarification. So I will now, um, ask that the member who submitted the call-ins within the report, um, and any of those of the trades involved will just speak right. I believe that's Councilor of Government's head of that.
Um, thank you, Chair. Um, the reason for this calling is, um, we've had big concerns about the com- comprehensive master plan, as it went through Cabinet. I think, um, just taking those three points that we've actually raised. The first point talks about, are we going to take it all pointing at time? Is that how we want to do it?
Yeah, so we've, um, you've, you've got two options, you can either introduce the whole report, um, and we will then go into any current, uh, current questions, or even if you like, just introduce the first question and that.
Yeah, okay, we'll just do the first one, that's probably easier, that's where we do it. Okay, so the first point was to do with the people yield. So, um, we did have some concerns that the yields that we used in the master plan didn't comply with the Department of Education's people yields. I understand that, um, the people yields are going to, um, reduce down, that's the forecast. But the, the yields that were used in the local plan doesn't comply with the yields that were used in the master plan. And, um, we are concerned as well that, um, there's not going to be enough room, um, for the education village, for the, um, pupils that would be coming from T1, the top batten lane, um, yeah, development, um, to be able to go to the education village, so they will have to travel to go to Longfield School. So, um, that really links in with our point of view from country, to do with traffic, thank you.
Uh, officers have submitted, uh, a full responses within the, um, the full agenda document, um, and so we will go straight to questions, perhaps from members on that specific issue of, uh, people numbers, and it's going along the schedule for asking. How can you go?
Um, thank you, Chair, just on skill numbers, we heard the words comply, um, there, um, quite, quite along my House of Henderson. Um, is there any legal duty that we have to match those numbers, uh, given by the guidance from the Department for Education? Um, I point out, um, in fact, eighty-five, which is mentioned here, it says new homes typically being cleaned. Um, obviously that's, um, the, yeah, therapy to England, um, I believe that the council number is, uh, a little more specific to Galwayton. Um, I might write to get my assumption.
Yes, the, the, the data published by the D F A is just a national average. Um, and that average pupil yield is from twenty-one, twenty-two, so that, that is a national average from across all of England and based on returns made by individual local authorities. Individual local authorities are responsible for setting their own sort of planning model. Um, in the local plan, I know there's a reference to numbers, but they were put in well before the plan was adopted in twenty-twenty-two. Those were just indicative, and if, if we look at footnote eighty-five in the local plan around section one oh six, um, funding for, um, developers. Footnote eighty-five refers to the latest T B C A pupil projection report. Um, the latest one is, is July twenty-twenty-four. That has been shared with the developer and that's the numbers the developers are using. Um, we have seen a drop in numbers, um, through declining birth rates. And, um, so the developers are working on the latest numbers based on what we've given them, um, in accordance with the latest T B C A pupil projections as outlined in the plan.
So, so those D F E numbers are nothing more than an average?
They're just, they're just for information there, based on a rough average, as I say, it is national.
So that's an average from the centre of London to the middle of Dartmoor, um, essentially, and that took up the supply in terms of those in, in terms of population, uh, and our numbers are, it's more accurate for, for Dartmoor to, um, at least that's, that's the council.
It's basically based on Dartmoor numbers, Dartmoor people movements, Dartmoor housing developments.
And that will obviously change, um, over time, the, the length of, uh, the development is, you know, twenty, thirty years. Um, and I think, uh, just about that in, so, in human terms. I look my retirement home in the final stage of Scirion, and I think a lot in the world might, might change in that, that period. Um, it might, it might actually goes falling over for us. Um, and is that factored in to, to that Dartmoor number and that the falling over for us?
It is, so the, the projections are done by an external company on behalf of Tees Valley. Um, they use the N H S birth rate registrations, uh, by post code, and we get that data and that, that's what we build our, our rates on. Secondary, obviously, air crime is a bit more difficult because obviously you've got, you've only got five-year leading type for the numbers there from, from birth registration to entry reception. Secondary, obviously, we've got much longer leading, um, for accuracy, um, but the latest projection will run until twenty-thirty-six, which is the phase for this housing, of, of housing development.
Thank you, uh, ju- just on, um, skill capacity. Um, we see the, in, in the office's response, that there is about twenty-five capacity, percent capacity in each of the, uh, local schools. Uh, and that would be enough for this, uh, phase of initial phase of development.
Yeah, both in primary sector and secondary sector, there's, there's sufficient, uh, school places to be the, the, this first part of the development. Um, at the minute, we've got one thousand one hundred and fifty-one surplus places in primary across Dartmoor. And that's likely to increase to one thousand eight hundred and ninety by twenty-thirty-six. And to give you an idea of that, that's equivalent to three Winfield primaries. Um, we've currently got two hundred and sixty-nine secondary surplus in the secondary sector, that's because we've got a bulge moving through. But by twenty-thirty-six, that's going to rise to nine hundred and sixty-seven, which is just over the size of Hall and the Cadbury, so it just gives you an idea of the scale of the surplus places we've got across the town.
Um, and when a plan is brought forward, um, at its, you know, planning committee stage, um, that needs to be appropriate as to, to look at that, if those numbers have changed, will that be taken into account at that planning meeting, uh, through that planning process when the actual papers go forward? Either, you know, now or in twenty or twenty-five years.
So for all, for all housing developments, I, I would quite respond on behalf of education around the requirement for school planning places.
So it is likely that those numbers will change in all over time, but there will be appropriate structures in the planning process to take that into account at each development.
Yes, both at pre-apply and full application stage.
Thank you.
Councilor Higman.
Thanks, Chair, just, there's also an assumption when these statistical analysis has come forward, um, around this sort of development on the side, when, you know, four hundred and fifty hours, two point four children, it's a nine number case. And, and there's a, a assumption that that's the sort of information that you would use to predict school places. Can you give us a bit of a breakdown on how that, our process works for you to arrive with that number, um, around that sort of size of development? Just, because the numbers, to the residents I would add, the numbers would be nine number plus nine number on the two point four family. But when you do the analysis, you're nowhere near that sort of number, can you give us a process of ranging to that lower number?
Just to give you an idea, Dartmoor's got one point six children, that's not right, I believe it. Um, but basically what happens is, is they take all the new postcodes from the new developments, so they look back over those developments, um, they're not built, they look at the new postcodes and they look at the number of pupils those post, young people those postcodes have generated. So they, what they get is, they, they get the housing data with the new postcodes, and they get the school data with the pe- the pupils' postcode in it. And they will match those people postcodes to the new housing data, and they'll, they'll calculate the pupil yield from that, the historic pupil yield.
Right, so have you set the percentage for technically the house sales, I would say, that it's not going to be four hundred or five hundred new families from out of the area? And the percentage of people moving within the borough lose children, they're all used to school, and the percentage of those, uh, expected to come from outside.
So, so they, they do look at, um, people imports, people exports, um, across the Tees Valley as, as well as this from, coming in from other areas. So they look at the postcodes of those school-aged children, obviously it's all based on historic data. Um, so they, they'll look at the number of children we have coming in from Durham, the number of children we have in Dartmoor, um, they'll look at the new developments, um, and, and do that analysis based on the historic trends, so it's all on historic trends. But if you look at the historic trends, we put places into Middleton St George, for example, their primary school, they haven't hit their number, the expected numbers we expected from those developments. So we're, we're actually coming in slightly less than we're expecting from some of these developments. So we could see that number drop further, particularly with the declining birth rates alongside that as well. So, Chair.
Thank you, are there any further questions? Um, it's Councilor Spurton.
Um, thank you, Matt, it's really interesting how the numbers, um, come about. Uh, I, I kind of feel a bit more comfortable that we're only at the primary school capacity. Um, obviously there's a lag with secondary school, so wh- when I'm thinking about the lack of capacity in schools, I think my mind is more on secondary schools that I'm thinking about. So if we're looking at how many children, secondary school children, that we think are going to be living in T1, um, east of the main line, the top batten lane, four hundred and fifty houses, are they going to be able to go to the education village, or will they have to go to Longfield School?
I'll, I'll take it, I'll take it back slightly, um. What we saw when Longfield was inspected a couple of years ago, and they got, and they had a good grading, we saw a significant drop in Longfield numbers and a move to Hall. Now, Hall traditionally had surplus places. Longfield was re-inspected in October last year and got a good grading. So we'd expect to see some of that trend reverse, so we'd see more people going into Longfield, um, with less pupils going into Hall, and I've got personal experience of that, my grandson is, is doing exactly that. Um, so we expect to see some spaces freeing up in, in Hallton. And, and again, with the primaries, it could all change with a good inspection or a bad inspection. And, and you tend to have a, a couple of years lag before anything will pick up after a good inspection. So we will s- we will hopefully see a move back into Longfield, there are numbers decreasing. Um, and we're already hearing that, totally from parents, that, you know, and we'll see what happens this year, um, when we get the, the, the data released on the first of March about who's going to secondary school for the September. Um, that should free up some spaces in Hallton. I, I know the education village is, is at capacity because we've got high levels of special educational needs and, uh, we are building a pub sixteen centre, which will hopefully free up some spaces, which means they can release some classrooms back to the hall as well. So we shouldn't see some orders of shift there.
You've got any evidence that that's going to happen?
We've got no evidence at the moment, obviously, we, there is, we'll, we'll look at the periodic preference in the one, the first of March when that's formally released. And then we'll do, which means that'll give you some idea of how that's shaped in. But we've got to remember that the inspection report was only published late last year. Uh, so it's a bit too late to affect this year's preferences.
Yeah, I'm, I was looking at the, um, long-term forecasting from the Department of Education, and I appreciate it's, um, a national, um, forecast, not specifically Dartmoor, but the, um, they quite substantially, um, reduced their long-term forecast of what they thought that it was going to drop by, so I think, up until, you, you might not expect, maybe, I seem to think that up until twenty thirty-two, it would be, it's going to be around seven percent drop. Um, but that was revised out to somewhere half of that, the three point five percent, but on up until twenty twenty-eight. Um, has that all been factored in to the numbers that have come from the T B C A, in terms of numbers for Dartmoor?
It, it's factored in, of all, but what you, what you've got to remember is, is that in the D F A, it is a national plan, and they're the aggregate that we supply to the D F A. So every year I have to make a return to the D F A with the pupil projections, so it's based on that. But what you've got to think is, you know, the growth in London and, and places like that, um, will offset the, the decrease in the North East. And if you look at the North East, when you look at the birth rates, not just for Dartmoor, but all of the Tees Valley, North Yorkshire and Durham, they're all declining.
I think, um, Councilor, um, has a very good case about, um, people coming out of town, you know, talking about the birth rates in Dartmoor, it's more or less possible, but then what we've got is, um, the South has a real housing problem. And we all live ones, they've got a big one, so we're seeing people come, um, to Dartmoor and we're building houses, bigger houses, so that that can dump down or housing the people. So, uh, all of this is factored in, is it, all of this, um, because we could see quite a few children are coming into Dartmoor, who are going to need school places.
Yeah, so, so all of, all of, all of that, the, the, the housing development growth is all factored in, so we've got two, two calculations that we work between, so one is, is the ones we've already got full planning permission for, and the other one is, is the outline planning permission, the sort of developments we know of, but haven't got to a full planning permission, so we look at both areas. Um, but unless we have a significant influx for, you know, like, when they moved a lot, a lot of the army back from Katrick Galsin, from Germany to Katrick Galsin, that had a big impact, and that was a, an unknown impact. So unless we have something of that scale, it's unlikely that, you know, that historical cha- trend will change significantly.
So you don't think that there's going to be any, um, impact on travel, um, by car for children to be taken to school because they're, they're, it's too far to support?
The, the, the game of age for the age of school transport is, is three miles for secondary, two miles for primary. Um, I can't comment on the, on the transport aspect of it, whether people choose to travel, to tra- to transport children by car or not.
So, um, the top batten lane to Longfield School, for example, is two point three miles, so I invite a bit of load. Would a child, secondary school child walk nearly five miles to their school?
That's the expectation from the D F A, that, that they're expected to walk to three miles.
Because if we look at, I mean, the public transport is there, if the circle link is there, um, I, I can imagine that's a realistic expectation. What are you thinking about the locations that we've got in the top batten lane of Longfield? I, I appreciate what you said.
Chair, can I fill this up a bit into the second question here, before we conclude?
It's relevant.
It, it's very relevant to the second point.
No, but it's into the second point.
So, so, oh, no, on this, second one, yes, so shall I secondly take you over, and you go to last, sorry. Sorry, Chair, I see.
Um, yeah, I was actually, um, considering that thing when it's on, so, um, they're certainly relevant. Um, but I think before we, um, move on to the traffic pressures, including those caused potentially, that would potentially be caused by, um, school journeys, um, I would like to see if anyone else has any questions, uh, specifically around the pupil numbers, um, and, and, um, up to public, or then they'll do, do that specific topic. Thank you, and I can also go on?
Hi, thank you, Chair, um, we were just talking there about obviously, um, uh, a shift from Hallton towards Longfield, um, uh, uh, pupils, so in the past, it, it's seen a, a shift, a, a move of kids, kids from who wouldn't actually go to Hallton, because it's Hallton, but now that's Hallton, the South's a bit, it's, it's naturally going to, there will be a shift. In terms of the call, um, we have to take into consideration, um, not just this, but obviously Vertri Garden Village, in the responses, there doesn't seem to be any, um, reference to that. So in terms of the availability, um, of the spaces at Longfield, with Vertri Garden Village coming online, do we feel as though it would be necessary for a positive at Longfield School, or would that shift from Hallton across?
Housing supply, full list of the developments, so Vertri Garden Village is included in, in the projections for the schools.
Okay, it was just all clear in the process.
Yeah, yeah, uh, uh, every housing development's coming online, it is accounted for.
Councilor Higman.
I thought, because not on transport, but the decision process around Hallton and Longfield, if you look at the levels, Scirion, it's not a sixty-fourty split, it's, it's, is it, on which school is the closest to anyone who's trying to go, or who are there. So why is it specific about Hallton being an issue? It could be that they're not putting the numbers increased in Longfield, and not Hallton.
So this, this part of the planning process, um, when they take it down to individual school level, each school will be assigned a housing development, basically, based on, on the, the nearest code, being on the nearest post code. Or it's then aggregated up to a Dartmoor level figure. Um, so Hallton, they will, or, or will be assigned Scirion Development, that doesn't mean all the people are going to go to Hallton. It's just, it's, that's linked in for when we aggregate the numbers up to a Dartmoor level. And it doesn't mean that all parents will choose to go there, they may want to go to Carmel or, or other schools.
Yeah, I'm going to do, sorry. That is really my comment, because there will be, it's preference, isn't it?
Yes, the preference.
And there will be preference for other schools in the town, how will we take that in, to, not being, well, you mentioned Calm.
Yeah, so, so again, the
And the percentages that would prefer Calm would be possibly there.
So that, that's all taken account in the pupil projections, based on historic trends. So they will, they will look at, the popular schools will fill first, empty last. Uh, the less popular schools will, will empty first and, and fill up last. So there is an accounting take in that, and we designate, you know, those schools based, quite based on their offset grades, uh, and parental preference for the historic trend from previous years.
This information from primary schools, you can, so that takes that down.
Yeah, so, uh, again, they, they, they get the full pupil census, so they'll have, they'll be able to analyse having children from which primary school went to which secondary school, and that's all accounted in into the volume.
But isn't there also, could there not be, not on effect from that, but difficult to calculate? Because some of the schools take non-pupils, don't they, don't they?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you can get a Calm school without having the service, I believe, to discover working.
Yes, so, well, again, we look at that based on historic trends.
Just on historic trends, and population and birth rate.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, okay.
Um, now, we only presume that the, the model is highly sophisticated with a number of cumulative factors. Um, please, I'm quite assured that it will be appropriately managed, um, on, uh, the, um. If there are further questions from members, I'd like to now have a talk to members of the public, um, Cabinet of Government, state their name, um, if your question is wrong to this specification, um, and the information, but, um, welcome to speak. Okay.
Um, I mean, I, I would have, but I was advised that the public couldn't, you said, ask a question, so I didn't come prepared.
Yep. Same here.
So.
Same here.
So.
We were told that we weren't allowed to ask questions.
So I'm quite surprised when the meeting commenced that you've said that we now can. I mean, I, as I said, I, I personally would have asked, answered a question, and I would have had one prepared. But because I was advised that that's not, I wouldn't be able, I wouldn't be able to do that.
But because I was advised that that's not, I wouldn't be able, I wouldn't be able to do that. So I am somewhat disappointed.
Who advised you? No, no.
Um that was probably a reasonable advice because it is at the discretion of the chair. So it was relatively possible I could have asked the public in a certain way. All I I have about it, acknowledging the question.
I I have a question that I I can remember from my my memory, if if you would like me.
Please go ahead.
Right.
Can I get my your name, please?
Uh Ralph Bradley. Do I?
Chair.
Microphone.
Okay.
Um you could use my phone, yeah. Not very helpful, I wonder.
No, no, no.
Thank you.
It was sort of on school numbers, no?
Because, I mean, I have an even problem and I will hear you clearly if you use the microphone.
No, right. But it's not about school numbers, sorry.
Um I'm afraid we're asking questions specifically on um school numbers at the time.
Right.
Worth a try.
Okay, I hope there's no further questions. Um so I will now go to a vote, two members. Um and so this will have me to my one end. So do you members agree that officers have satisfactorily addressed the specific calling question? And feel they should not be returned to the cabinet?
I misunderstood what you said.
Any, any comment on?
Okay, I'll be right back.
I've been saying, when you say the reason behind unresponding, when you say, I think the officer has explained quite in detail. A process is used to get to the papers and the numbers are being produced from the documentation. And then it is clear that in future possible meetings, clarification on that will be come under planning guidance and won't help further.
Yeah, I would agree. Um but we we will now move to a, so I'll just repeat it. So do you members agree that officers have satisfactorily addressed a specific calling question and feel they should not be returned to the cabinet? Okay, does anyone else say? I will now ask um councillor Henderson, who has been on our question, he came on our podcast. Thank you.
So this is about the um questions about traffic modeling. Um we touched on it already, twenty one. So if the example, the pupil numbers and um the traffic that may be hitting the roads of the north of Darlington. What's interesting to me, I think, is that we use up-to-date civil information. But we don't need to be using up-to-date traffic modeling information. The traffic modeling is now quite old. Some of it now relates to the two thousand seventeen. The the report was written in twenty twenty one. And I think there would have been um a lot of funding updated in this traffic modeling. A lot's happened. Um another couple of important points that have happened within this timeframe since the last modeling was done. Is that the um building of the local distributor road has been put back by six years. So there was a legate from Bathley Lane to Bishopton Lane deeply built in twenty um twenty twenty five. Which is now um twenty thirty. And the whole of the distributor road is now going to be built, it looks like, by the end of twenty thirty six. So there is a gap. And I know that um this has been to a number of houses, not time. But also over time, traffic, the existing traffic does grow. Uh there, you know, you've got the existing traffic and there's a a a change upwards of the loud tack on the road. And this will happen in six years without the local distributor road in place. So our concern is that we'd like to fix the up-to-date traffic modeling so that we're not going to see a huge reduction in those Darlington on um. You know, excess traffic. Thank you.
So I will now um I've got two questions from members. So there's obviously some crossover between this and the local distributor road. Um I would say that question three that we haven't got to get will be more centered on specifically the location of the road. So as long as we're not revisiting that until later, um you obviously can refer to that that road. Um so please, please go ahead and ask any questions. Dr. Marsh, please.
Thank you. Um yeah, I I I I think that the days that someone has mentioned about traffic modeling. About it and and I think cross-model, today, traffic modeling um would be would be useful. Um I I for clarification, I don't I don't think now the days seem to be for the for the future or the for the from the county project to the local plan. Uh the the link from um Bathley Lane to Bishopton Lane. On how many hundreds, four hundred and fifty will be twenty seven, twenty eight. And and the translation of the if from nine hundred hours of two fifty hundreds hours will be twenty thirty one, thirty two, thirty four, thirty five. Uh I'm aware of that, I think it is. Um I think we also need, I I I remember this this is during our our visit, I think, from all these calls, there are three, there are three main, three main criteria. Um I agree with the school that's been that's been accepted. Running infrastructure is 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 key element in all of this, in all of this, in all of this call in. Um the traffic modeling, the same you're did, I think, I think that's a valid point. Um I al- I also think that we should do the options for traffic modeling. And I don't know whether this is better for the service in a planning, in a planning condition or in the or 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 amendment to the last one. I'm not sure, I'll take advice on that. But from where we grew from is that we should be doing everything we can to minimize traffic on Bathley Lane there. It's good to know that we've now got some agreement planning as we're concerned in a in a in a planning condition. There's no construction traffic going on in Bathley Lane, I think that's positive. Running is in components of present, it's one of the residents. So we should minimize um traffic in the inbound residence traffic, additional traffic to Bathley Lane and Grumsey. And it'd be nice if we could have every, once of those four hundred and fifty houses built on the third on the third application. And the distributor road from Bathley Lane to um the Bishopton Lane, it is complete. That all access and egress from from the from the development is via Bishopton Lane. As I say, I'm not sure that that should come under a, under a planning condition. And I would like to see the refined traffic modeling to take that consideration in your camp. Um we would like the city to bound the end reserve for open transport, cycling and pedestrian, pedestrians and all the egress and access from the development. Certainly from from the east, although the east was saying that um going on to on the Bishopton Lane. Well, I've commented at this stage, I I I don't know. But that stands, we are, and the other element on this, I think is important. The distributor is key to all of everything I've just said. And we have to make sure that it's complete within the town scale, but within healthy completion, that from the local plan. And a a concern that that has been discussed is how do we, how how do we ensure that developers will will keep to that? The freehold, the the main, the the main lines, the expenses. They are, they are funded. And how do we make sure that they keep on load and do fund it? And I think that, I think that is something else. And let's say, what are these things about planning conditions are, I'm sure, that's uh.
Okay, um councillor, I think you've got a few points. Um I'll go to Andy Cathy and see what you can put up on that. I think my um the thing I would add is. I would like to know whether the master plan can in any way constrain um like the idea of of. I'm not sure whether they're still able to go through with the model.
Yeah, I don't know. Do you want to, I'm not asking, I'll I'll cover the long one first, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh thank you, Chair. Um yeah, um I would broadly agree with, you know, what what's been said about modeling. And the the nature of traffic models, the projection in the future, based on previous travel patterns. Um the requirement for the local plan modeling is very specific. It's, there is some work done. Um we have to, for the local plan to be uh doing sound, we have to demonstrate that there is some severe impact on the highway. Those were severe effects and and yeah, so that was, that was the the exercise that we had to go through uh in in doing that. So I think there's a question that was asked also related to other developments in the town. I'll probably just go back a little step and explain exactly what that model uncovered. So um the local plan proposed um housing required with the O A M, objective assessment, the age requires something like nine thousand five hundred-ish dollars. There. Um in order to do that, housing land must be aggregated in specific areas around the town. I'm telling you, a lot of councillors, what they already know, just one of the first principles. One of those sites is called Skirningham, but we have the model that actually covered every development within the town. It's in order for us to to model the impact, we need to know how many, obviously you've got the original where the trips, the new trips are going to be, where a journey's going to start and end. But we need to know how many houses are in those individual developments. So there's a development database on the back of that. Which had a projection of how many houses were pre-expect, were expected to be built over that period. And that's what the model is based on. Um it it was the the original base model um which basically set up to to um reflect what the traffic patterns were at that time. It's developed in twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen, and actually finished in in twenty seventeen. Typically, um and what a traffic model is good for about five years. Um beyond that, and and I say typically, because I'll come back to the other thing that's obviously said of course. Um so so yeah, we've known it for five years and it's um fairly reliable. But the gap away from being developed is reliable, there's a limitation of these things. Because it's a projection of the future based on previous travel patterns. The other thing that's happened because that, like a council's not aware of, it's been that the pandemic changed the way that people work, the way that people move. There's been a significant change in travel patterns. Um or there was a significant change at the time. Um I mean, the year of the pandemic was next, normally we're after that, there was a noticeable change in travel patterns. So not only is it modeled, some of the assumptions that were that it was based on are kind of probably outdated as well. Because the previous travel patterns changed through the through the pandemic. So I'm getting getting to it, really, I'm I'm I would agree that the the traffic model um that we use for local plan. Needs updating for us to be able to assess impact of developments moving forward of these developments. And that'll be a requirement, we require that. So the so the there's a, the model, the specific model of that quarter in the town. It's a Neimson model, it's developed by a company called Form, uh another called Stan Tech. Um they're currently working on behalf of Skirningham State, I think it is, rather than the the wider Skirning area. And they've just updated the model. So the so the current model that they will be um submitting, uh the transport assessment. For the for the first phase of development will be based on traffic data from twenty twenty to uh maybe twenty twenty three. Up to date uh up to date data. So it it will, it is updated. Um. It's basically, I think, we've we've got through the process with them to to assess, uh to ensure that it's validated correctly. That's what we, that's what we look at when we get them off. One one's a great tool, it's, you know, the hardest tool, the the, you know, they'll never pick up on the parental choice of which school I'm going to go to on the other side of town. So it it is just a tool uh that we can use. But that has been updated. We've signed up a validation for that. It makes international requirements of all different traffic models. And they have their reply to their, the way they build a planning application is slightly different from local plan. So when you look at local plan, we look at every development, pretty much worst case scenario. We actually modeled the eleven and a half thousand houses instead of nine and a half thousand houses, because it was eleven and a half thousand allocated. So it's actually a bit of a worst case scenario when you look through to planning applications, which is the next, next bit after this master plan. Um the the um the developers have um is required to be forwarded and and look at the detail of the the specific impact of their development. Which will commit what conflict development was after those problems of, of our information. And that's the stage that we're at now. Um the requirement really for this, this is an interim stage, really, this is the the master plan, something that we've developed. We've got the local plan policy that was built on the back of that local plan model, which is why we've got those those regular figures for when various pieces of infrastructure required. I'll probably find out at this stage as well, the the loan number is the number that we sent, if we were planning. The hire number is the number that the developer said that they could accommodate. They then have to prove that through the planning application process. So um there's a a transport assessment, I think it's in here already for the this one, some of all. Um and they've basically done up-to-date modeling to show what the impact is on various junctions and on various slip roads, including Bathley Lane. Um it is for them to prove that that doesn't have a significant impact on the operation of the highway. But that's, that's what we we have to do. So I don't know if that fully answers that bit of it. It's um. I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, but it it they they update.
Yeah.
But what what they're doing is that that is through our plan.
Yeah, uh yeah, probably the other, the other thing to mention is we. We're obviously scrutinizing the master plan here, um in the context of the local plan policy. Um it it's it's really, there's there's a statutory process for the planning applications. Um and and comments, obviously, anyone that come on the planning application through the planning process. That's alongside kind of the the earth of this master plan process. So there is an opportunity for anybody who, you know, has any queries about modeling, any issues with the the kind of the. With model, model to be developed and the assumptions that there is. Um and just any general points about highways through through the planning process.
A certain mention on the draft, it's been, uh, that's the next, so we're saying the traffic modeling that was done with the master plan. That always, when we're discussing planning, it could be a change and that the numbers could be increased. And yet we've been asked to improve the traffic modeling within the master plan at the moment. And I think this is where confusion is to me. I'm not quite sure whether what we need to ask and prove is accurate.
Yeah.
Um and and the planning applications can prove the might be discrepancies. So can you just clarify that?
Yeah, it it's not, it's not quite that, the cancer's got. So the 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 model that we did for the map for the local plan. Um it's just to look at whether we can accommodate a number of houses and a number of jobs, education, some of these, all the other things that are in the local plan. Without causing a severe impact on the on the highway. So we, that was, that was, that that piece of modeling is done and we've still got the reports, I still use them because it's a useful tool to reference other stuff. But that's, that job's almost done. The next phase, so the master plan sits in the middle. That's a, that's a a document that, um, David O'Connell explained it better than me, but but that's a document that developers can follow with. Uh and uh which uh which is a requirement of a local plan, which they're showing, they're making a ground. Obviously, it's ten in the local plan and some of the other requirements in the infrastructure and also the design code. Um after, so that's purely what I did, that's what I made, that's purely what that that's about. The model, the detailed model, is something that we always require for every planning application. So anybody that's, you know, been on a planning committee will know that anything over, I think, sort of the houses requires a transport assessment that requires these detailed traffic. So if anybody that's, you know, been on a planning committee will know that anything over, I think, sort of, the houses requires a transport assessment that requires these detailed traffic modeling. So it's it's, I don't think it's a change, it's it's a, it's the process that we have to go through for planning. It'll be, it'll be very similar assumption to base models, base model, you know, it'll be updated, but it's still a bit of a base model. It's been updated in terms of the traffic flow. But we will then have another goal in this, to make sure that, you know, if if, for instance, we identify that, you know, a a development that's in the local plan as an allocation has an impact on a junction, and the impact's so severe that we have concerns, I mean, what, uh, what we could refute it in in favor. Although we'd have to, you know, we'd have to bring forward other infrastructure. So it it's it's just a second, more detailed level scrutiny, from an office of your view. That we have and a control that we have, it's something, you know, we we need to control these developments. And, um, I mean, the model, the model we've got, the first one shows that it doesn't have severe impacts. That's what the the models come in. But they're also about to start looking at first children, first children, because they're all looking to see what what that model, what that additional traffic. I mean, my mind, I've got a, you're the thing I probably won't make, I don't know. Um, the matter of all is to try and protect, one matter of all is to try and protect the, you know, the traffic flow, we've got a statutory duty in the council to make sure traffic flow is attacked, but that's all that's part of the thing that we will do. Um, if it's something, you know, that's not going forward, it's, you know, like this group, I would have a good duty down. Said, no, actually, so we are, we still, you know, it's allocated from local plan. And there's a master plan there that says this is a person, it comes forward in the detail, it shows that, you know, on the side of the town is gonna be absolutely critical. We will, we'll, you know, we'll take care of it, and we'll be honest and do it.
Thank you. Um, I do like to go, so we have to, uh, turn to the handover, which, um, comes out in, I think, of the norm. Um, but just before I go on to his question, I mean, that's a little like to you speak to that. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, could you just, just one question, the question, how did you probably acquire the funds from this, um, and you're going to the competition, so, uh, uh, I'd like to go back to the people that are down to have, would be more than a second, I guess.
Um, I'll I'll have David, um, for the part that has been in this line of development, and then you can say.
All right.
Maybe if I, thank you.
Um, thank you, Chair. Um, just a couple of points to make. Um, Council of Commons, regardless of the end information of the traffic modeling. The same base data was used for the information on the master plan, the design of master plan has been used for phase one application. So it's up to date in most respects. So the application is using the same sort of base data, which, uh, Andy's already said is a valid base data after the after Covid. So that that's that's one comment. Uh, Council of Marshalls, uh, clients, um, you mentioned about the housing trajectory in local plan. Obviously, because these applications have been delayed for the whole process of designing the master plan, we were expected building on site to start that trajectory. So you probably need to look at the latest authority monitoring report that we published every year, because we do re-critique the trajectory to take the plan sites have been delayed. So there are no more houses that we expect to have been built by now would happen to be built as well. So that may happen to stay in the account. As far as delivery is concerned, I think, um, chapter six of the master plan refers to a few occasions. I'll just call this. Appropriate pressures will be put in place as part of any planning commission to ensure local distributor road and bridge over the E C M L are delivered as well as conf- as confirmed and defined routing. Then it goes on to say, planning applications for each phase of development shall demonstrate that development will not prejudice the delivery during major phases. For example, restrictive planning conditions should be used to secure delivery abroad, sections to an operational standard to the site, to the site boundary or the dedication of land to the council in order to avoid ransom scenarios. Furthermore, each application should also contribute proportionally to common infrastructure where justified. And final quote is, discussions will also take place from national highways in relation to the impact in various phases on development of the strategic highway network. And any physical modification or section one or six contributions will be agreed as part of the application process. What I ca- I can say is, we have instructed a, um, specialist consultant in section one of six agreements. We normally do section one of six agreements ourselves, but because it's such a strategic process, and we need to make sure that all of the infrastructure is delivered. Then we are doing a wider section one of six to make sure that every contribution, make sure that the infrastructure is delivered, including the crossing the east coast and make that by the appropriate time. And also we'll be triggers within the planning application process and by conditions to say when things can happen, or things will stop before any further development occurs. So I hope that answers your questions.
Yes, thank you. It it does on 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 the sustainability of that being completed, I mean, when with the link. One of the comments I made was because to minimize the property coming down Barstow Lane and the access to the aggressive shoes onto fish to then rather than rather than Barstow Lane. Once that history grows, it's a bit, and the links from the from the separate developments can be there.
Yeah, there's there's a there's a trigger there, which says that the link has to be put in between Barstow Lane and Bishop Lane.
Yeah.
So it's not just a public sack by that point. Um, so by the four hundred fifty occupation, I think, to one hundred fifty, then that link road would have to be, so that means it's not just a public sack. Uh, obviously, the traffic, um, plans and assessment associated with planning ensures it actually works to that number. So that's what we have to rely on and 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 how a highway is calling to assess that.
Um, so, uh, hey, man, do you have any thought?
Uh, thanks, Chair. Um, it's obvious from the conversation that there's a lot of issues with local planning, definitely, and another place, I'm, uh, of course, as well. Well, why don't we get a bit of clarity on, um, clarity on how the process works? It clearly states in the documentation that the master plan is under transfer document and will change or is greater. From paragraph fifteen and the remaining four, it's it's the, and the process of bringing home every master plan determined by the status and regulation by law. The town can do that. Just a little bit on that. Uh, planning regulations to focus out the document to be prepared as a local development document. And it does, it's only at the end, it sort of says that the master plan goes sits underneath the local plan design code. Can can you just give us, um, I guess I lost it all three. Can you give us some clarity on how that actually, or looks on a bite chart, whatever, and where where the master plan is and how progressively it could change through the way the local plan is used and the process of the council to leave that requirement within the master plan?
Yeah.
Which which do celebrate it very very briefly, but if we are kind of, I've had six, and I understand the other man fully understanding.
Yeah. Um, basically, the government produced a statement, which is the local plan regulations two thousand twelve, it's got signed over time. Um, but that, um, that regulates how we get to local plan adoption stage, but also an S P D adoption stage, which are statutory documents. And a class of material considerations and determination plan application. The master plan is not a council document, it doesn't have to follow those regulations, it's prepared separately. And all we're seeking through the cabinet report is to agree that it doesn't conflict with those statutory documents. Um, so over time, and it's mentioned in the master plan, that the master plan will be reviewed, as the local plan will be reviewed. And to clarify that, up-to-date traffic modeling, so for example, if we decide to extend the local plan period to two thousand forty one, we would have to do up-to-date traffic modeling, take that into account, because as I said, the modeling only to us for two thousand thirty six. The master plan similarly may change over time, because it's a fifty-year development or fifty-year plus potential development. And things do change. And in review of that, we will look again, all the evidence base, whether it be education or highways, will all be reassessed as part of the process.
And that's through the council's normal processes as well?
Yes, the 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 local plan and the S P D changes will be reviewed through the la- the actual council's process.
So fully, like, we're working a little bit of that.
Absolutely, it it's, time changes.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Council, um.
Thank you, Chair. Um, thank you very, very, uh, for those excellent reactions. Um, if I could just focus on on this distributor road, um, and obviously, being a much, um, specialist legal, um, there will work on section one of six agreement. So as we're certainly, I think, just in college, really, really simply, I would imagine that, you know, that the law of early, so you know, you are in the basis. You pay, or you make great contributions, those, they're thrown in the face. But is there any possibility where the council could then, uh, hold in the day, or be held to answer, or the the final version, which is the, uh, which, or the, or the rest? How about another question?
Thirty-one, each phase will provide parts of the distributor road as part of that development. Um, so that we lighten up any other development, help develop five extra acts as well. The, what we need to do is a mechanism in place to make sure that the east coast main line is delivered. And there is a trigger which says you can't occupy any more houses until that east coast main main line is, so the developer will have to stop. It's not so much that, um, further phases will pay more towards, it's to try and get equitable, so we can assess the the cost, et cetera, and get something in place. That mechanism will include a multiplier, for example, to say that if inflation goes up in F R costs, or then the costs of contribution will grow. So that's all part of this, um, piece of work that's going on before we determine the plan application, or before we sign the section one of six. Because as you're aware, we often would say approve subject of the silent of section one of six. So the principle of the development might be acceptable, provided that there's a clear one of six that will make sure that the development can be delivered in its entirety.
Um, and then just one more question to that, uh, uh, so so there is the potential for, uh, vehicles nowhere?
Um, no, there's a tricky problem. It there'd be no more development for the road to get to the point, and that's where, in effect, the, that's what highways are saying, there's there can be no more development without that link, that link road. Um, what we need to make sure we have in place, and that's why we've we've employed this specialist one, because they've done developments of ten thousand houses, et cetera, near Bristol, et cetera. They've actually put a strategic network in to make sure you deliver all the infrastructure. And that's what we need put in place, to be that clear and it's acceptable and it's sad about the developers.
Okay, all right. And then just a quick mention on that, so.
Unless it's, uh, relevant to the traffic pressures, pressures question.
Yeah, maybe it it does relate to that. So, um, so we've got a situation where there will obviously be planning conditions that we put, uh, on next, uh, no. This is relevant to the exchange here, um, because Verdry Garden Village Exchange, um, and there there is a distributor road, um, spined road through that development, which will be starting on the S T A. Well, that was, you know, that the idea of that's all source residence. Um, but unfortunately, that can't come online until there are improvements, yes, it's a little bit run out of, enough, that's a part of planning stage. So this is, I think, it's a it's frustration and for the members, that, you know, this is through this master plan process. It could be clearer. So my question is here, is are we expecting a similar situation with with the Skirtingham development, that the distributor road cannot be open in its entirety until the the run of improvements are there?
Um, can you, Cathy?
Thank you, Chair. Um, oh, sorry, yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, the answer's no, well, I can add, the 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 actual, the actual issue was the way for the year sixty-six roundabout. So Verdure Garden Village, um, it's got a distributor road, and as you said, it's centered towards the top. Uh, it depends, but it'll it'll be a, a basically a a a poikle, or we call it a poikle, if we don't be able to let traffic come on point. The r- the reason why that was required, um, is because we need the Skirtingham, it's actually the Skirtingham Link Road that we needed to place before we could open up, um, the, um, Verdure Garden Village and Broad. So the issue that you brought in, um, when we when we looked at the modeling, anybody who lives on your side of town, Kels, that are fully aware of the problem to get across down east to west, uh, west to east rather. Um, because the the problem, because, you know, we've got very skinny bridges and and what have you in Dalton, and then we've got an inner ring road that's pretty busy at the peak hours. A lot of the model showed up, the local plan was, is the road that the number didn't tell to capacity, but the road network, people want to get across to T side, from west side to Dalton. People on the east side of Dalton want to go up here, well, that showed us the initial, um. When we looked at, when we did modeling with the local plan for the, um, Verdure Garden Village, um, I put the link in, what it showed it was, it was about six hundred vehicles in the peak hour. Um, and but only about a third, I think, of it was was actually trips, was new trips that were, uh, originating from the Garden Village. Two thirds of them were people, you know, perhaps lived in High Grange or West Park, who've actually jumped down the road to go across to T side. Because it's quite common, they're the route is meant to go west to the east, it's meant to go to, um, round about, then back down through Verdery. So we created a, we created a through route that was attracted to existing trips, basically. And the vision that that created was, um, anybody who's the old six seven, they'd be aware of the issues that Verdure Garden, that, uh, White House Junction. Um, but also, there there's a related issue, which is probably a bit more, uh, contentious, um, relating to Thompson Street, mini roundabout as well, and Laria eleven fifty. So if we'd have allowed that to be open prior to Skirtingham Link Road being fully developed, then that would have created an issue at the the White House Junction. White House Junction itself is, um, you know, it's a, I mean, verdely lane, it's a cross road. But probably ninety percent of the traffic that goes through that junction, it'll be along six seven, probably around ten percent. It's it is verdely lane, it gets very little green time. So actually, a a relatively small number of vehicles, technically, verdely lane lights can create quite a lot of gear, because they don't get a lot of green time in in the in the phase, because the old six seven's so busy. Um, that is a, that is a junction that we're looking at, so that's part of the infrastructure delivery plan, um, that that's, uh, a junction that we need to improve capacity at. Um, that's we're doing, but we're looking at that now, um, in terms of the feasibility of it, and come the members at some point, see, you know, to show what what the proposals are. So it it wasn't actually the year sixty-six, it's just the the na- the nature of the way that we develop local plan, we need, uh, it's a kit in, in terms of highway infrastructure. And then that creates a, and then we use by the developers, if that makes sense.
Yeah, those, so the, uh, just, uh, just very good comment out there. So, so we're confident that when it comes to planning, there will be no similar restrictions, because there's nothing south or east of the distributor roads that's going to stop that being all in doubt, so yeah, that's, I'm sure that's gonna probably be it. Absolutely not. I mean, the the sum of the bills is getting along better.
Thank you. Um, so you have questions from, or can I consider a little, or?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, in relation to construction vehicles, um, using mountain there. Um, am I correct in saying that that is a plan issue rather than a master plan issue? Yeah, so that would be a good plan extension.
Yeah, sorry, it's, we're dealt with through the construction, um, yeah, construction plans submitted with the application. But it is probably where, um, developers have secured land on the construction, uh, road from visual then.
Uh, we can enforce that through the planning application process.
We're expecting a central plan application for that, so, yeah, we can do that through the planning process.
Thank you. So so, very interesting concerns, but master plan is necessarily the place where they should be fixed. There's there's really an opportunity for that planning stage and that planning stage of every phase of this development uh, to to facilitate, uh, construction vehicles, uh, to make sure we have that section one of six to reach through infrastructure. So then that is the point at which we should be looking most at the specifics of, um, you know, infrastructure, is 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 that, how that usually works. And I know this is not a council document, I think that needs to be, uh, really handled. Um, our job is to say whether or it is or is it is not in conflict with our local plan. Um, what goes on at any place? Thank you. So 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 areas of concern, concerns, but master plan isn't necessarily the place where they should be fixed, there's there's really an opportunity for that planning stage and that planning stage or every phase of this development, uh, to to facilitate, uh, construction vehicles, uh, to make sure we have that section one oh six and we can prove infrastructure. So then that is the point at which we should be looking most at the specifics of, um, you know, infrastructure, is is how how that usually works. And I know this is not a council document, I think that needs to be, uh, really handled. Um, our job is to say whether or it is or is it is not in conflict with our local plan. Um, what goes on at any applications, um, how we send it to this master plan, am I correct in saying that?
Um, yes, two two points. One is, um, each phase's application will de- will deal with certain infrastructure provision as part of that development, and will submit construction plans which could be agreed and could be actually enforced, um, so that controls the actual construction traffic. But then there's a wider, um, section one oh six payments for infrastructure outside the individual phase, so it's a bit of a hybrid thing, but most things can be dealt with at the planning application stage. But the planning application stage without generating one oh six, which is that wider construction provisions.
Uh, thank you. Just a quick question on, uh, the the modeling for those live applications. Um, who provides that modeling? Is it the advocate that has to go there and, uh, for the modeling to be done, or is it using existing, uh, modeling, uh, with some sort of tinkering, uh, on the edges?
So the, uh, it's 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 on the advocate to prove that, um, that the, uh, well, it's the advocate therefore, um, from Kieran, um, it's without the proof that they're to allow us, and they're not on our network, so, um, even though it is argued, we do go out second by the cherry, we, uh, we scrutinize in in a in a lot of detail. In terms of the model that we've used, um, um, for skirting, it is the base model, it was the model that we used for local plan.
Mm-hmm.
We wanted to encourage that, because there's, uh, there was a doubt about that model, and, um, you know, yeah, we we're satisfied that the model, the base model we produced for local plan was accurate, and, uh, and we know that it's accurate, so that we were satisfied that there's more in cultures in there that may, I don't know, um, underestimate the impact of it all, or so so they have actually used it, but in reality, because of the nately updated data, it's a complete rebuild version.
Thank you. So in essence, every planning application made on skirting for its lifetime will have its own up-to-date, um, traffic model, uh, given what it should have been built and what it should have planned at at time.
Yeah, and it'll be, uh, be viewed, we kind of want to talk about councillor Henderson, that we're really thinking of applying councillor Henderson risk, lots of the shows like, and it's been over five years, and, yeah, we'll be talking about things up to date, uh, today's data, or, you know, even three to five years, or we might be asking them to update, or they may need to ca- carry out a check, a veri- verification check to see whether the models actually still are current. And we, it's in everybody's interest, maybe not the models, but certainly, everybody on this side of sales' interest in the models as up to date, as it possibly can be replaced, you know, the traffic patterns that are, that are going, or the the results, considering.
And I have a question on on modeling, uh, yeah, modeling question really. Um, if the master plan is a different model to the local plan, would it then be in contradiction with the local plan, or is that all allowable, um, update?
Yeah, it's, um, it 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 doesn't, I mean, in terms of the master plan, it just needs to satisfy what the local plan says, so and and it does, so there's always, you you always, um, consider the impact from based on most of today's information, I think that's in everybody's interest that we do that. Um, it's really more max purpose of the master, the local plan was just to ensure that we had, met our housing needs and did notice appearing that, that's almost done now, you know, that that's the the, it's going to get reviewed every five years, and we'll have to do some level of based on minutes, five year iteration. Well, it's then for, when the development process went through the, uh, planning, ultimately goes to planning committee, because they've got approval under certain guidance, national guidance, that's what I follow, but they don't have a, they don't have any, they don't have any two problems, and that they have. So they'll always be asked to buy the state modeling, and we'll always be all over it to make sure that we're not doing great things from our.
Um, thank you, Chair. Just another quick comment, uh, sorry, um, understand, or remind somebody is that this will be looked at at every stage, um, and will be constantly updated. Uh, this is the final version of the master plan, uh, it's not the final version of the local plan, or anything before, still in the process of development, uh, to reuse. That would then be of the times of that will be updated throughout that process and content, um, to that.
Yeah, and it's very, very shocking to hear that, um, we'll continue to use the stuff today, um, the digital repositions, um, and try to try to succeed, because when they need current better master plan. I'm going to turn, and so, all right, all right.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just going back to the modeling, just, um, trying to get it all straight in my head. So you say that the local plan modeling update, I get that, um, I understand that the master plan is a captured document, that's fine, but, um, developers do need to prove, um, it's an infrastructure plan, it's 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 saying exactly when those can be built. So, okay, this is the last chance to see the master plan, it it will, uh, see the whole of the development, anything in its glory, it's the last chance to see the whole of the jigsaw puzzle piece. I appreciate that, um, it's going to be updated, modeling another planning application stage, but we're actually just small parts of the jigsaw. So if you're saying that there's going to be new modeling happening for phase one, for phase two, is that looking at the whole of the jigsaw puzzle, or is it just looking at that particular phase?
Yeah, it it just looks at the individual phase, but looks at, uh, the way that, uh, when we go through a planning application phase, it's a certain, as I think they ask you to, it's a certain way. And what they'll look at is, um, they'll look at base base traffic levels, and so, um, you know, what's happening on the road, about anything, any development happening, they'll then, or they'll lay that on top of that, any developments that have got planning permission, around around next to the open, so, you know, in that in that area, there's a road which generally will face to Amazon at the moment, that there will be transport assessments done, as well, there was transport assessments done for each loads, that that traffic there will then be laid on top, it's their, uh, committed trips, we call them trips, but it's it's with them, they're committed trips that haven't hit the network yet, but we're going to hit the network as they've been approved, and then on top of that, they will lay there total traffic. And so it it it's not, it it's a it's a little bit different from what we did with the local plan, because what we did with the local plan, we looked at the whole of the network, and we looked at the whole of the development, um, um, that was happening, that was proposed, and then we had assumptions about how much traffic was developing, was happening, it'd be the same. There's this just, because this is clearly the way that it looked at, this this just looks at the stuff that's, um, in commission. Um, so 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 for instance, for the four fifty, that'd be all the plans and things that go through the planning process now, um, and then they'll just put the four fifty on top, so it won't look the phase to, uh, be for the, that'll be for the model, and then I'm comfortable with that, because we've looked at, we've we've come up with producing infrastructure for locals, sorry, we've done a lot of the, should the infrastructure, identifying the infrastructure delivery plan, which is part of the local plan, and with the skirting as a key part, skirting and link road is a key part, you know, in terms of problems skirting in the very least. And we're satisfied that if that boards in sixteen hundred and fifty houses can be built in the skirting, and that would have a significant impact on the existing highway network, uh, uh, and in addition to all the other developments that would be, you know, sent traffic down the eleven fifty. So it is quite a robust, um, things about the the local plan, but then we've done that exercise, that was a big picture, highly strategic, looking at everything, we're now looking at the native relief of, you know, individual planning applications, and that's a process of all.
So you said that the, um, developer presented, well, um, got hold and did dismodeling themselves, updated modeling, when they prepared the master plan?
Yeah. Yeah.
Did did the cabinet see that information in order to be able to decide that this is acceptable to the council?
It it wouldn't, it wouldn't be for the calendar, et cetera, or, um, so so the 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 master plan isn't, isn't something, the master plan is basically a representation of what's in the the policy. So the model that the the reminder to the model to really justify the application, the impact of that toll, they've looked at it, they will have looked at it to develop the master plan, but that's not something that's for them to do. They're still, uh, you know, we haven't, we haven't said, the, um, haven't said that the the modeling, um, that they've produced today justifies for, you know, you're crossing G, it's ten G four there, like this private application between the nine hundred and fifty hundred dwellings, distributor road, the whole of the road makes me, we're not saying that that's right, that there's fifteen, you've got fifteen hundred dwellings, what we're saying is, what the the master plan reflects what's in that policy. The figure, I mean, the figure that we think is correct for that was nine hundred, or it could be somewhere in between, it could be fifteen hundred. But that's for them to come forward and say, we've modeled, there's a validated model, you've signed on, we have not signed it on. We've taken account of future development and committed developments, we've put on the extra traffic, and there's the impact on the on the highway network that the model showed. And, you know, it's shown that if there's an extra fifteen minute till air on the eleven fifty, we'll have issues with it. It's shown minimal additional till airs, but, you know, I think, uh, well, we will be, we'll be fine with it.
Did you see that stage, that the developer modeled in the master plan?
I'm not sure, I'm not so sure that, no, we haven't seen that. What what we really think that, um, I mean, it's up to the developers to show us what they want to show us, basically, but the purpose of the the additional modeling, they may have used it in the master plan, but in reality, the purpose of the additional modeling is to meet our requirements for up-to-date modeling, and it for us to enable them to submit a planning application. So it's 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 all related to the planning application, so I think that was discussed.
This is my final comment, Chair, that's okay. Um, so what I'm hearing is that, um, we often see up-to-date modeling, and we're, I'm hearing that the the modeling that we did, just overall jigsaw puzzle pieces that you're talking about, um, we haven't seen up-to-date data, what we've got is old, and, um, the base traffic is, um, grows, there's a growth rate to it. So because the building of the full distributor road is today, five six years, will the this the stack, um, grows within the base traffic, but it will have to be dealt with by residents, that they're not done and doing it in that direction.
I don't think, I don't, no, I don't think that's, I don't think it's current. Um, so so we've we've seen, when the model, uh, works is that we have multiple scenarios, which is what we basically, they've done a model scenario of four hundred and fifty dwellings, that that's something we have to consider, because I remember something upon application, a four hundred and forty nine dwellings. So that's, the the model report that they've given, that's in a model scenario. The model that we have looked at is a base model, so that's, and and the validation report around the base one, so they're showing that the model they've produced operates, shows realistically, um, reflects what happens on the on the road, so so and that's that's the way these things work. It will be a further renovation of model that will be required. You know, we're not, we won't, uh, we're not considering anything more than four hundred and forty nine dwellings, I think that's what they've submitted at the moment. When they come in, if something more than that, they'll have to do another assessment, and then that four hundred and forty nine will be part of the committed development, and might be other committed developments by then. So it's it's a robust, a robust way of looking at this, and and ultimately, it's it's reasonably accurate, you know, so if if it's shown that there's big issues on the eleven fifty, I think everyone knows the eleven fifty is pretty close to capacity, that they're past due at times. So if it's shown big issues on the eleven fifty, then we'll have big issues with the problem.
Thank you. We're now open to, I have a last one, sorry, just one further clarification, uh, it's, yeah, it hands really, the document that we've got in Mickers three, it just said comprehensive master plan set up, but phase one of the development, we used to park the allocation with the access via Martin Lane. Now, when we're talking about Martin Lane, obviously, are we just going to, um, say that the, um, the construction traffic will not be accessed by Martin Lane, phase one, which is, which two hundred, which the first houses that are built, they will be accessed by Martin Lane? That's in the document.
The access.
Is that still into the initial analysis of the development?
Yeah, because that's what the highway road showed, that that was acceptable, the number of houses off Martin Lane. Um, so all the same is that the, to be honest, the figure showed that you didn't have to have a central construction road, developers have actually done that, actually made the issues for residents, so that's acceptable, that they wouldn't need to do, because we've just assessed, assessed the actual phase one, I believe, the structure of the construction and all the traffic, it would be seen as acceptable in the highway terms. Um, but because the it's the idiopter of creating the construction, the whole front issue of, is to alleviate that issue of the construction traffic over the the long period, but the actual access from Martin Lane to the residential properties is acceptable to that moment.
Just one more clarification, that's all we deserve, I'm actually.
Here's a great one, yeah.
That's just a little. I hope bringing, uh, councillor Peter and and Roland go to, um, the other.
Can I just make a point in this, we're actually having a conversation that we've had a year, two, three years ago, um, it was always a case that the master plan must be subturned into the local development plan, and the local development plan was always clearly discussed at length, uh, when we proved indeed, when you were leader, uh, councillor Anderson, when you, councillor Marshall, were lead member, uh, for a planning, in the role that I now have taken, that flows for that on the plan through. So, uh, pressing now, just my common observation, it's very strange, because you you two know that we've had this discussion before, and it was always clear that the master plan must be sort of served below the plan, and there was always a debate in the process, uh, after that. The the contentious issue, which, um, you know, I've worked hard on, it's fair councillor Keir, and Barge also worked on, is taking that construction traffic off, and we now have a situation where the developers can happily, gladly, just go go through a plan, um, have a a, uh, they they will developing, they will be developing or something, a plan to develop a whole road, a a U L road, uh, on the, uh, land of the, uh, the old, uh, Quay Road, uh, mission there. But I just wanted to make that point. Thank you, Chair.
And any additional contact?
So I have a section comments, but obviously the this process, that coming through the scrutiny, gives everybody a more opportunity to put questions forward. And there are members who are here, so please clarify some of the day and some of the questions. So thank you, your two members here, are there members that you may want to just say, some of this stuff, get on your way.
Okay. Um, it's, uh, councillor, uh, Ali Keir, uh, if you could please go to the line, uh, go ahead, not only me, but I'll be switching out of the room.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have a question in the the local plan, um, and the, um, the master plan, based on quality of the consequences, pretty much consequences, um, so.
Sorry, can I just speak to the line here for?
I'm speaking in the night, Abeda.
Yes, of course.
Yeah, it's a good, uh, I should be, Abeda?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
That would be really quite important. Um, so I'm looking at from the line here, coming to my speaker, um, I'll go to the number, and when you look at the 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 master plan, and you look at the the road numbers that are done, uh, by the traffic modeling, there are currently three thousand cars down Barton Lane and on the neutral regions now, that's from traffic data that I'm attempting. Based on six hundred, um, new homes, or take three quarters of that, there are three thousand houses in there, an additional three thousand houses in term of Martin Lane, it's almost doubled, and four thousand thirty three quarters, that's two thousand gone up on the neutral case, so that's like seven thousand houses on the, uh, journey around the case. That, to me, is a consequence that is unacceptable for the residents, uh, because it's going to bring not only the Barton Lane, egress access to the stand, still, so the traffic lanes that adds to the only way to handle another four thousand vehicles in their their, their existence. So it seems to me that that is a a specific thing that needs to be answered before we go forward with this master plan. And as much as I'm also planning issue, well, I would like it to put into the master plan documents that in view of that risk, and also a risk and also a risk that um David raised there where if there is no forthcoming winnows coming in, forthcoming buildings, um and the rest of the master plan in the future, then that area at the top of Barton Lane is still going to dead pickings. So add in the item or until it becomes a viable property or a viable um development, any traffic in any building is uh any traffic in the new development will necessarily have to come down Barton Lane and or Windrushway forever, because the the developers will all come here or whatever. And that's the bigger risk. But that's over and above the fact that we're going to almost double, that's well double the traffic coming down Barton Lane onto the A eleven fifty. And it's nowhere to go. It goes to that A eleven fifty there forever. Um Andy was saying that the A eleven fifty is almost uh uh capacity just now. So if you're going to put those additional additional traffic onto um the A eleven fifty, because there is no other place for it to go, then it's going to cause good luck. I I do um thank councillor McHugh for listening regarding to the the um construction traffic that we call it. But I think as a consequence of what we're saying, I think a real good end would be that last leg of the relief lo road, I think we're calling it. If that could remain permanent, then that would allow traffic to go down that road out towards um the A six six round inbound area. And that would diffuse all of that traffic that we need to go along to the A eleven fifty. If people were running into town, it's coming around the route, they're getting turned away, they're going to the middle of the road to go east. If we were going to go west, we could either come like towards Sedgefield Men or like or want to go north. So that would help diffuse the traffic from that or um piece of the development. And generally, then a a sort of grid, a a central road, it should have made sense to have all of that the crossing that put a present back permanent part of the end of the road to go down there. That would solve a lot of the issues and would help the people in uh Windfield who are going to have an additional or double amount of traffic going down Barton Lane and Windrushway. It's a Barton Lane, it's named, it's a lane, it's we're in a name clash road, it's just a dodgy recently, it's not, it's it's a a lane. But it's just now the traffic is involved in every band and it's not, it's it's basically just through traffic on the highway. If you're going to have a lot of traffic, you're not going to have to stop. So my ask would be, the traffic laws that we've done, to to look at that that access road and then to look at getting the access road permanent um at phase one, because at phase two, it's going to involve up to four hundred about to be to four hundred and fourteen houses and viewpoint is going to be four fifty. So there there is a risk, there is a risk that the development will not proceed inasmuch as we know that it's going to be a big course for and they're they're already.
Thank you. I'm glad I told that because uh come in today has some concerns, I guess. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm making a small comment here, but uh very good. But um I think the model that you referred to, that is the one from the or it's about a year ago, isn't it? Is the uh model that we did, very specific model that we did for the women without Spinfield Park Link Road. Um so it's a little bit different from the other stuff that we've uh that we've done, but broadly speaking, the things that you talked about will be will be correct in terms of the the uh additional trips down particularly down Barton Lane. When 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 we look at, I think I think at the time, we we but uh I remember the uh picture of the presentation in my head now where we we looked at um capacity of the road in terms of obviously Barton Lane, it's a really wide road. In theory, that road can carry up to two thousand vehicles in a big hour. I'm not saying that's what the residents want. I think what what yourself and certainly residents are looking for is an environmental, almost an environmental capacity in that, you know, you will notice an additional three thousand vehicles on on that road without a doubt. But that's what that's not something we can uh propose in in planning. There's no such thing as as an environmental capacity. We just have to look at whether the road physically can accommodate that number of trips and the junctions at their at their turn as well. When we looked at the local plan, um it was it was it was okay. It will be additional, you know, in which way, but it was at a at a level that we were trying to it was at a level where it wasn't as too competitive enough um to to be an issue. The now article for will be transport assessment of the four hundred and forty nine phase one development. And that will get looked at again with the new uh traffic plan data. And again, tend to take a look to see what, whether it will do those four or nine.
Thank you. Um that response, uh it's a bunch of time. We have had questions from many of the councillors and councillors and the public or for every councillor. Um we will now go to um a vote.
Can I ask a question?
Um ready, uh we are on that specific question. Um.
Thank you.
It's ridiculous.
Could we ask you to reconsider that because it's a serious argument, everyone's.
Yeah. You said earlier on we had an opportunity to ask a question.
Questions are of the discretion of the chair and the Tidying member that was with what I have available. We will now go to a the um by members.
It's ridiculous and just all stolen up is there?
Two number three, officers have satisfactorily addressed this specific form of question and feel they should not be returned to Cabinet, we shall pass.
Chair, if uh I think I think across from from one of the one of the values of the chair tomorrow, I want to give it is on this actual subject, um I would like to hear what residents have to say personally.
Can I go on?
I would how long about it? Um the we don't want to say this question back to Cabinet. There will be opportunity after question three for members of the House of Questions.
Sorry, repeat, sorry.
There will be some opportunity after question three for members of the House of Questions. Yeah. Yes, so we have done the vote. Um we will now move on to question three, um which is about the location of the church around local take question um as a group of the public within the town.
Excuse me, Chair, could I just ask the question, no, you can ask. Will it be about question two or specifically just question three?
I would like it to be about question three.
I'd like to ask a question about question two.
Uh we don't have sufficient time as we think to ask other questions.
I'd um I'd like to put a compliment in then, please. If you're going to give time at the end of the meeting for me to ask a question about question three, why can't we have time now to ask something about question two?
I would like to say that my discussion to uh anyone who's going to ask questions, we did get someone for my next question and um I decided now I had to move on.
Uh Chair, just one clarification. We did ask for um to give you a list of the questions we answered. We took a vote on those on the table. We didn't ask any of those on the days. And we obviously aren't on the can't be methodically to tell the question we're trying to answer. But then you said you didn't ask the question after we decided on that. Was that what you're saying? But just said we were here to forward the vote, so I'm not sure I'm right. I think the answer.
So so I want to clarify where are where are the agenda. So you are right that we have um to ensure funds for those in favor of asking on the vote that I have heard. Um and so I will ask, um anyone who's not in favor of that, your show of hand will be there now. And we will now move on to question three. There will be then questions for the remainder of that time and then a vote for our. So yes, so um regarding the vote that we just went to, um does anyone disagree? Please give a shout out.
Because. Answers. The 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 question I I raised, and I'm not sure where the best answer is to. It would be directed to this board, by the way, there's a cross wrong, it's wrong to do that.
Fine.
Maybe it could. So that's definitely. So also a plan we you were bringing, there's another danger, you're trying to run into them, but now about their.
But the plan means that large developers, sorry. And the large developers, as David explained, there is usually a construction plan with limits, usually hours of work, access.
No, that's not a construction plan.
I think.
I want a presidential one, one one.
Access to and from the site.
Right.
Times of work.
Uh property management.
Yeah, exactly. And this this is.
If you have any comments, comments even, if you could do that, officers, that would be great, because we do have to get them on, right?
I mean. Yeah.
Sorry. So question three, um how long since you um been providing for the question three?
Then the actual route of the local distributive road, there was a sister report which showed the distributive road avoiding then going in woods. And but then the comprehensive master plan shows it going through woods. And then I we also felt that the master plan, particularly the local plan, because there is the the precise route is of route is still not determined and that should be between local plan and the site itself, the road. Um shovel delivery by council as part of the master plan.
Okay, um noting the results from the officers provided can get um questions and we'll open up to both members and the public um for the remainder of the time. So please return your question on its um location on the local distributive road. Councillor John.
Uh Chair, I'm not quite sure if you can get the the beginning of this, because on this issue, um the I'm not sure exactly the exact location of uh that road will be determined at the planning application stage. Um yeah, well, the master plan on page thirteen of the master plan, small b, talks about precisely the route of the route of the road. The road will determine the planning application stage and the twelve consent order that people. In local plan policy, page ten, begins to say it's precisely equal to the road, given the time difference, the information we read in the council, part of the master plan. Infrastructure phase plan and any future applications will decide. The master plan route is shown follows largely the route on figure six point two of the local plan. So the master plan is a control link with the local plan. The sister report was a report that was done for feasibility crossing the bridge. The S P does have a paragraph which suggests that the south arm to ground that avoid the woods. But you can't possibly say that without detailed design work, because it hasn't been done on top of all its studies, bore holes, et cetera, to find work. There's no detail that that route wasn't part of the agreement for that um report to assess it. It is not statutory document or hard to be taken consideration. It was a feasibility study done by consultants to literally show that the east coast may like up across uh feasibly and the technical design of that as as far as height of the bridge, crossing the can trees, et cetera. So it's not considered with whether the master plan complies with the local plan.
Thank you. Um I think I'd like to hammer home, like, you know, I needed to say whether we agree or not with with that whole then we said whether or not it that we is obviously through the local plan. And as you probably said, I just all disagree with the local plan.
And then, um I'd just like some clarity on that, because the the part that you wrote out in the local plan, precisely tells of the road and shall be agreed with the council as part of comprehensive master plan, infrastructure phase phase plan, which part of master plan, so and any in planning application, did it say or? It says and. So that to me is that precisely tells of the road should be in comprehensive master plan and should let through the local plan. So how a bit confused to me, that reads that it should be precisely told in the master plan.
It cannot possibly be at this stage when you're looking at a street map for a whole area and you haven't done the detailed design of the exact route. Because as I mentioned, if it's not looked at for no reasons, um groundworks, et cetera, it could divert slightly or 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 largely from that route. But it does follow the fact that the local plan says a need, there has to be a link between the eleven fifty and the A one six seven. So there has to be, so the master plan has to show that, at least the link going through there. What I'm saying is the detailed design and whilst it's showing the link, it's not showing the detailed design, that will come through plan application, detailed plan applications, survey stage, et cetera.
Well, they've got two quick points in.
Are all plan owners of this um where this is the um road that whether the route is that for them?
The access line, yeah, east coast midline is fixed.
Have all landowners agreed to the road or do they not?
Um there's no landlord's objection to the route of the road in any of our documentation, whether it be the local plan figure six point two or the master plan. So there's been no, um I can't be um the certain confidentiality of of landlord ownership deals, et cetera, but my understanding is, you know, the road can has to, it has to happen, it can be done. It can be done um at the very latest stage by company repurchase if we needed to, but that's not the way we think we need to go forward.
So if you're saying no, these components objections, that's not professionally asked, this is anybody agreed. So that's two different things. And then you're talking about company repurchase. So does that mean that not everybody's agreed or the landlord's not agreed?
As as I said, I can't state whether everybody's agreed or not, because that's discussions between developers and individual landlords. Um the, as I say, the master plan, if somebody didn't want or had land that the land that distributed road was surely going over and didn't agree to it, then they could have objected at any stage of the process and now.
What was the letter from Satnam that came through yesterday saying that the road is going to go through their fire in the land?
Yeah, that's right.
And um it was saying it's a little objecting to it, not necessarily, but they they felt that they shouldn't have housing on their land sooner than it was indeed and.
Yeah. Yeah, and and that would be contrary to the local plan, which has details about phasing. So that's a reason it's not shown at the moment, but it's post two thousand and fifty.
So what's that now say, will you want one of those through? We're not going to have a house there. We don't want to go into our land, and then we're left with a housing development, um mostly built and a complete road. Is that a possibility? That's that's a position that I'm kind of before.
They they could come forward that possibility, and that's where we might have refused our full repurchase, uh to me, this huge road, because of the importance of that road and all the way through. But that.
How would how would it be?
Well, that that more than that's only the process, but part of the goal and commitment is to actually shorten the company repurchase. And and we're talking about two thousand and forty, two thousand and fifty, that's it. So it's a long time away for negotiations. Satnam obviously want residential value for their land. That's what they're coming up for for. But it was always shown and um the paragraph in the local plan said about that land will be assessed and the local plan reviewed for employment purposes. So the road could still go through, but it's serving employment. It might serve some residential, but we have to look at that to power the local plan review.
Thank you. Thank you. Um councillor.
Thank you, Chair. Um I think I mentioned before, you know, when we were doing the local plan, you go on to the next step and all of a sudden you find out something new or or even re- mission interpretation um uh isn't the right one, you know, the details are sort of different. So. Uh, isn't the right one, you know, the details are sort of different, so just going back to all council and Henderson talking about the exact wording within the local plan. So from what you, you're saying there, to what, what you understand is that when it makes reference to comprehensive master plan, that's just going to be, it's in similar sort of lines of interpretation. If it's such a phasing plan, um, will then decide when that then is going to happen and future planning applications is where the details are going to be. Yeah, so, yeah, I think it's, as members will probably have known previously, so, and said, you know, maybe naively. Um, I, I, I won't have all the things, I think it's more of a topic, once you actually go through the process, you find out more through this. Um, so I think this is a big conversation of the, what we would do with the local plan, this side round.
Thank you, are there um any questions from anyone in the room regarding specifically the location of the local distributor road? Yes, um, I don't think a while, maybe the corner, please say, if you want to, if you want to say this side round, you want that.
Thank you, Chair, yeah, uh, as a member of the public, I've attended many meetings and I've also attended all of the design code and every stage, you know, during the adopted local plan here in Woodstock. Oh, you're there, maybe at the next stage, all your answers will be answered. We got to the design code, we got told the same, and then we said, don't worry, we'll get all these answers when it comes to the master plan. Here we are, we're getting told it's all going to be answered at the application. Now, the garden village, uh, community prospectors says that the community should be involved from the very early age, from design to, to, to delivery. So during the design code workshops, all of the members of public said we did not want the road going through Skirning and Plotonation, which is better known as Skirney Woods locally, and they agreed. And in the design code, it did say that the road would be aligned not to avoid, uh, to avoid the woodland. Now, the feasibility report that councillor Henderson mentioned, there's four options for a crossing across the east coast mainline. Uh, there was three bridges and one underpass, and all of them said there is an opportunity for that road to avoid the woodland, uh, with the roundabout. Um, I've got an email from somebody in this room that said the distributor road is undeliverable unless it goes through the woodland. So I'd just like to ask the questions to the people in the room, the officers, is why is it undeliverable unless that road goes through woodland that's, you know, everyone in the community wants to serve?
Thank you, and um, actually, for myself, when I was reading the quote, that was actually the exact same dominant question that, that I had. Um, and I'm, you know, as a luxury owner, I'm probably in advance, but um, for everybody here, um, if we could provide that for a time, thank you.
As I said, the actual detailed time isn't there yet, you don't know, um, the sister report, as I said, was tasked with getting across the east coast mainline, not anything further than that. It's saying, and it does say dense woodland, where I think if you look at the, the indicative layer of the distributor road goes through probably the narrowest part of woodland. Um, there's no guarantee with the sudden spurs, if you also look at the four options, it shows a roundabout with a, with a east version which goes towards the town, so not just one option there. Um, so again, what I would say is the master plan and then the local plan, they're not, don't have to record with a feasibility report from a, a project. We don't know the feasibility of the rest of the road, we don't know exactly if it does go through the woodland where, and what the design code says is wherever possible, so avoid wherever possible. The woods in one location not far from the road is hundred and ten two metres wide, uh, where the big word shows indicative is between fourteen and fifty five metres wide. Um, so in effect, they did have followed the current master plan route, and that's it, it will, it's going for the least and narrowest path. Any development, as you were, especially this scale, is going to have some impact on, on the environment, whether it be trees or woodland, which again, the local plan policies say is avoid wherever possible. Uh, and mitigation put in place, um, so if any of the woodland is affected, there will be mitigation, there will be more than ten percent diversity net gain. But we do not know precise details of that road until we see the design at that point in time.
Thank you, are there any further questions?
Could I ask a very quick question, Chair, regarding question number two?
Um. I would prefer us stay on question three, um, and if there are any further questions, go through about, I will say that. Questions more gen- generally are about previous questions, I think that we can still, it still doesn't bother me, because that's our options pretty at any time.
Is that application stage, Chair? Would that be application stage, you say, I may ask one question, because that's part of it, we need to get this right, it's going to get built, we want to get it built correctly, but it's not going to impact us for the rest of our lives. I've lived in North Wellington all my, we're here, the fifty's being mentioned, it's getting worse, and you're looking at putting all of these cars onto it, so are we going to wait till last minute at the application stage or can we ask a question now?
There's, there's been some special questions on.
Chair, there's. Section four's question, so you deal with this, is there a question across section four?
Yeah, as, as I say, there is, there is a, at the very end of the agenda, there is a general questions item.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions specifically on the location of the distributor?
But, you know, there's, there's, there were all the council officials, kind of, which go on the front, but I'm really doing this challenge as soon as the opportunity to ask questions in more detail. And it's a shame that a couple of government officers, whoever it went to cabinet, but I understand all the officers for extra information that's certainly I am um getting today. Because there's not the opportunity in the cabinet to ask the detailed questions.
Of course, you're bound to ask one question today, are they going to change the way you're doing currently forward?
That was kind of asking.
Actually, if it's not changed, it, it won't bloody happen, no?
Any further attributions, and uh, can we think that you?
I would just respond to those comments, uh, I haven't been able to use the term going over background. I'm just reminding councillor, I'm just reminding.
It's politics again. Sorry? He's politics again.
Councillor Marshall, Councillor Marshall, their role in this previously. Second, um, I remind colleagues that we were under no obligation to take it in cabinet, and indeed, I spent two and a half hours, I would have spent more, and indeed, it's, it was the longest agenda item. Uh, probably in the issue in the council, two and a half hours, so to say that you did not have an opportunity to speak is, um. Well, I'll let people use their own terminology now. Thank you, I'll just slide it around.
Okay, um, yes, so we've come to the end, um, there's our three fifty nine, so super brief, super brief response, and we will, then we go down to the vote buzzer here.
Yeah, thank you, oh, I, obviously, I need to go over ground, I'm unclear, it's just a clarification really, I'm unclear if this has already been addressed. Um, as councillor Henderson pointed out, I understood it that, uh, the, um, what was set out was what should be presented in the master plan was, um, to, um. Present a series of options for the road and choose one. Now, from what, um, David Hamler said, um, that the previous options report is not relevant. Uh, I don't see any information on the, in the road as to why that even outline route has been chosen. Um, and certainly why the route is not any of the options that were, um, covered by a previous report.
Thank you, maybe David can keep referring to that in the talk.
I'm just not sure what report you referred to were options on the road, I've never, I've never seen a report of options.
I understood that that was meant for part of the master plan, and that it would then choose the route from, from presented options.
I'm not sure where you've, you've got that from, that's not, I mean, the, the indicative route is shown in figure six point two of the local plan, which is going to the local plan. Um, there was never, uh, 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 I mean, if, if there had been anything on that, that would be in the consultation process, not in the agreement with the final master plan. If, if we'd have put the final master plan forward with four options, then how could you agree?
Good, thank you, um, I would now like to go to a, um, a vote from members. So I will ask, do you guys agree that officers have satisfactorily addressed a specific common question on the location of the local distributor road? Um, and do they feel that this, um, that this should not be returned to cabinet, please give a shout out in the right favour. I will also ask if anyone, um, disagrees in this right here. So to conclude on this, uh, meeting, we have discussed all three questions off the call in. We asked on round of votes, have been perhaps the majority for each one, um. Have agreed that we do not need to take this call in, um, on the master plan back to cabinet, um. And that is the outcome of this meeting, thank you all for attending. Yes, um, my apologies. Point one of agenda, are there any questions? We will, everything else, yeah.
Yeah, you never, I think.
Yeah, so, so the question is, which will truly comment, uh, uh, a, a group, that's part of the council scope, and, uh, we appreciate all, all the officers' time and all the members' time there. Um, in council queue, obviously, reference a fact like this in a council document, and it wasn't necessarily a route, a long route for us, uh, that we decided to take it to that end, which we appreciate. Um, because it, it's all politically charged, it's very, very morbid, and I think, you know, the next time something like this comes down the line, then we do need to bring these items to service before they go away where others. So we can naturally defer them to the officers, because when it comes to cabinet, the cabinet meeting was, was, was very, very charged, there's a lot, there's a lot of frustration out there, um. And the detail analysis for all the questions that we've had today, just probably, probably asked, and I think, thank you.
Um, yeah, thank you, so I'm, I'm, I agree with, with, uh, what you said, and I'd like to, yeah, after the call, let's hide the original to, to answer the questions. Also, yes.
Just to remind Chair, I mean, obviously, said that these are working documents and subject of some change to avoid in the council processes. Um, there will be opportunities in future meetings of a different committee that will allow these questions to be raised again and clarified in greater detail when there is a need to build.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, uh.
I just wanted to say there are any more questions, I'll be the one that has it back earlier, yeah, um.
Thank you, Chair, it took a brief percentage of the time, everyone wants to go away. Um, it was part of question two, um, it was good to hear in the room to hear that, um, you know, this, um, traffic problem that was done for the local plan still, you know, loo- looked at, it's outdated, but it's still getting used. Well, you know, during the, um, adopted local plan hearing, the planning inspector, I mean, everyone in the room can agree that the planning inspector, the local planning inspector agreed that Skirning could remain in the local plan. Based on the information he was given, he said it was sound, uh, and, you know, during the, um, hearing, he was actually told that, uh, the phase one, um, the, the Skirning, um, garden village, uh, top of Barmpton Lane. That after ninety houses, uh, that are occupied, that the eastern part of the distributor road would be replaced from Barmpton Lane across to Bishopton Lane. And he was also told that the full distributor road, including the railway crossing, would be in place and open by twenty thirty. So the planning inspector's taken a lot and followed when he's made his final report and said that it could be sound in principle, and it was, um, adopted in the local plan. Um, so now we're looking at a cul-de-sac application for phase one at the top of Barmpton Lane for four hundred and fifty houses. Um, now, here's a document from, and we've heard the, the, um, T's Valley Combined Authority, you can mention a few times, but uh. Here's a document from T's Valley Combined Authority about transport, it does say that no more than three hundred group buttons should be, um, serviced by one road. And we all know, as many people in this room know, how narrow Berdery Lane, Barmpton Lane is, and how busy the A eleven fifty is. So the planning inspector made it very, very clear that no, um, different parts of this large allocation should be treated differently. It was one master plan, one infrastructure based plan for the whole site. So if we look at the banks part of the allocation, which is next to the A eleven fifty, uh, before it hits the railway, where the railway crossing would be. Uh, an officer of Danquary Council has actually said they can't have any more than three hundred houses occupied, because it's only got one access point, which is on the A one six seven. So why are we looking at a planning application for four hundred and fifty houses, which is a cul-de-sac with one access? It's the same site, it's Skirning and Garden Village, it's not two separate sites, everything's going to be treated the same, and that's what the planning inspector made it differently for. So, you know, we were told, or he was told, ninety houses for distributor road, but you know, now, in the documentation of the, um, developers' order, uh, against the checklist of the design code. We're told that the local plan is king and the design code is king, but actually ticked the box that said the distributor road is not applicable. So I'd like to quickly ask a question to the officers, is why is the distributor road not applicable to phase one, Skirning and the spirits?
Sorry, I don't know what you mean by it's not applicable to phase one.
They've, 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 they've put a, uh, a checklist of the design code, you know, we were told during the design code workshop that a planning application would be declined if it didn't adhere to the design code. And the developers actually put a document there, and it's a, it's a screenshot of the checklist, and they've actually ticked the box that the distributor road is not applicable to stage one.
But it, it isn't because phase one doesn't require the whole distributor road to be produced. Uh, and it's clear in the policy, when you talk about magnetic dwellings, it's not referred to in the policy at all. The policy that was adopted by the inspector or recommend that we adopted, talks about up to four hundred and fifty before the road, the distribu- the bishop road is built. So that's what the policy says, that's the local plan, um, so I'm not sure where the language comes from.
Uh, it was Andy Desi that said it, and, and had the representative from that traffic model, um, it's on YouTube, do you want me to cover it? Um, there's, there's a couple of points I must add, but I'll just cover off the almost easier one, which is the number of dwellings of a cul-de-sac. Uh, you're right, that it's, uh, the, the document which is referred to is the T's Valley Design Guide, specification, the new, uh, rest system of state roads, I mean, what you brought, new roads. Um, which is local guidance, oh, sorry, uh, which is a local guidance of I T's, I don't know, probably is, although. But really the purpose of that, it's, it's not, it's not a capacity issue, it's, it's about how roads operate, so. We don't, we'd like to have a second access when there's more than three hundred dwellings, because at some point we're going to go in there and resurface the road, and, and it means that. You know, there's three hundred properties that want access or have limited access, or there could be a water main getting prepared, road might be full, and so it's. It's more to do with the oper- operation in the longer term of a road, and, you know, a room one, big, we, we're trapped inside in the state, we're trying to avoid it. I think we're probably, you're correct in saying there's four four nine, and they're farming there. The, the reason why we've accepted that is a temporary, a temporary arrangement, because there will be a second access, but it'll go across to Bishopton Lane. And after, you know, on, on some five hundred cent, and then obviously there'll be a third access in, um, in the, maybe in the longer term. Um, across to, across east coast mainline to the back side, so that, that's the reason why we've accepted that. The design guide also, um, has, what a, a phrase in, a, a phrase in there called, uh, giving us discretion, and that's what we use there. You may, you may disagree with our discretion, but that's, that's the reason why we've come up with, uh, come up with that, uh, that decision, um. Sorry, what was, what was your opponent's? Yeah, so, so the ninety, um, what I talked about earlier, I, I think that.
when I talked about earlier, I, I think that would probably have been the twenty twenty one, I'm guessing, um.
It was, it was during the, um, uh, the local plan hearing.
Uh, yeah, I, I remember this, I, I, yeah, and so it, 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 it's a, it's a factual representation of the modeling that we carried out with the time. So, you know, when I, I talked about, um, this model, it's like, it's like, so the purpose of the local plan model, I'm going to go over again, I don't think anyone knew where, was to demonstrate that development around all of the border could be met with certain infrastructure, uh, requirements. That was, and in order for us to produce a model, I'd get some assumptions. One was on build-out rates for development, so that ninety dwellings would have been the twenty twenty one, it's an idea. And we'd assume that Skirning would start in twenty nineteen and nine, by that point, ninety dwellings have been built. And obviously, we were sat where here in twenty twenty five, zero would be built, and we'd probably be twenty seven before the start of, I know, I'm guessing, go down, go through the planning process. So there's, there's a huge delay having, there was, uh, referred to, uh, you know, the development from the board as, that we've, that would initially have anticipated. So that's why, I mean, uh, squeeze along in terms of the infrastructure as well, because we can't, these things are at a point in time. The re- the, the reactions are, they're, um, they're required as a requirement of a certain amount of development just to buy in. Was asking a developer to put in a piece of infrastructure because we've got them through the planning process, uh, we can't, we've got the only obligation we can put in and one's where we can demonstrate that they're required for the dwellings. So that's, that's the reason why I, I'm, I'm, I would agree with you. I'm, I kind of never could be say that, probably watching a video or a round there, um, but I can say, I have a round myself. I, I was, I'm pretty sure that ninety would have been the, how many houses we thought might have been built by twenty twenty one. And that was probably when we made that assumption, it was probably about twenty eighteen. So that's, so that, that's, that's the reason. And, you know, second of all, things do change, and in predicting when development is going to be difficult, because there's all sorts of barriers to development. Sometimes, sometimes developers sit on land or sometimes they, they've got another parcel of land in time and they don't want to compete against each other. So the modeling is fairly strategic, in terms of, in terms of early, it's fairly strategic, it's fairly broad, we have assumptions in terms of when the development happens. I think, I think the key thing in terms of the local plan, and I'll try to break it, um, is that the twenty thirty six scenario, that's.
We want, Chair, I think the officers give a very complicated answer.
Thank you for your discretion, Chair, and I will be fully complimented.
Can I just ask a quick, quick question?
Well, there is actually, um, the other one from to all left, did I say your name?
So, it's, it's only a quick question. The, the, um, the, the planning application that's, uh, has been submitted at present only shows the development with one access point. Are you now saying that, that that sounds to be changed and we have another access point from that four hundred and fifty yards?
No, no, absolutely. Whatever's in is in. So that would force the, for the, for the, you know, the cul-de-sac of Barmington Lane, so, uh, doing that, that's the application, yeah.
So, so, so that sounds to be what it.
Yeah, that's what we consider, that's what we consider. I think they're putting a second reaction in for the construction, it's okay.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's, are we going to be one access point to?
A phase one.
Can I ask a question?
To my last question, I always get to our four o'clock, and we have, um, I've been making the, you know, the proposals that were necessary. So if anyone is going to, going to need to help, and do, I would just, um, let through this, this final question, uh, and you all, and you all, uh.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Hands, uh, the government. Um, later on in the last, uh, Conservative administration, after lockdown, you met with some residents from Barmton, Harrogate Hill, Winfield to discuss their concern about complications of the Skirning development. Um, obviously, they were concerned about traffic on the A, uh, one one five zero area. And, and one resident wrote down an answer again, which was, it's going to get worse before it gets better. And I'm presuming that quote, again, also stands for North Road. That the traffic on North Road is going to get worse before it gets better, and, and the better, I'm presuming, is the distributor road.
Um, yeah, that's what I was referring to, the fact that, um, until we actually can divert some of the traffic off that road, if traffic increases, it will get worse on that road.
So we know that certain things work for it.
Well, and that's just the, the fact that if traffic increases, we don't, because obviously at that point in time, it was probably pre-COVID, that was it.
No, but it's later on in my question.
Well, we, we don't know what traffic, um, patterns are going to be like, but I think what I was referring to is that, um, unless anything happens, such as a distributor road, that's not going to alleviate any problems on the eleven fifty, and including a road to rather better.
So, so can I ask a question, sir, to Mr. Casey? Um, as you see in the images you write down, quite certainly here in the northwards, it's a bit of a dark outfit in the morning.
Yeah.
Um, and if I can re-push that a little bit further, and we, in this meeting, there are four councils whose constituents that are affected. Um, two of which have spoken for the constituents, councillor Kew has spoken twice, and has, and has curiously not mentioned the problems that his constituents are going to face when they fall out onto the A one one five zero. And maybe to spare his emotions, as maybe, so, maybe, I'm getting to a question. Maybe if on his way home, he has an epiphany on the road to Masseus and actually is concerned about his constituents. Um, my question to Mr. Casey is, if the council, if you decide to, 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 uh, suggest the commission of, of a council modeling wagons, what would happen if the council in modeling wagons on traffic proves in contradiction to the one of the other routes which is?
Well, he, of course, we did commission it at the local time, so.
When was that, councillor?
That was twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, when he said the outside is. Yeah, yeah, that was. The two, the two, but at, at the time, in the sense, so, so, what we talked about, so it, it gets back to really what the local man, yeah. So you could, we, we have to, as a traffic authority, as part of the local plan process, we have to go through a, a full modeling exercise to prove that the, I'm, I'm repeating myself, I know that, I'm going to make the point again, that, that's the gateway we have to go through, being specterous. And we did get through it, and we wouldn't be severe impact on the network. That's something we have to do. What's come forward, and then, and off the back of that, obviously, you've got policy H ten, which is quite detailed. You look at the other housing sites in town, they don't have that level of data, a very detailed phase in infrastructure one with some figures set ag- against it. So that was put, so we went through the, we went through the modeling process, that's produced a policy. I accept that was based on modeling five, six years ago, seven years ago, but that's the policy, and that's the one that's in place. The master plan couldn't do it, and what we have to do is assess whether that master plan fits that policy. You can't go back and redo the.
So that was my question. My question was that if the council decided to commission seven or eight years of a new model, and that model is in contradictions in what was intended by the developers, so it's what happened.
It's a hypothetical question for what, so what's happened, what happens, the process that we go through when a, when a, um, planning application comes through? The, the developer will always, the developer's consultant, the modeler will also always come and speak to us. So that we can get an agreed set of data from all the traffic cams. So in terms of the traffic cams, when they came through, we've got automatic traffic cam sites throughout the town, so we corroborate that against what they've said. We've also looked at the details, uh, in terms of, um, Google, uh, Google, um, in terms of journey time, they're looking at journey time data, it's up in the background. So we will assess whether their model is correct, and then it's a fair, so where we've done that, we've satisfied ourselves, what they've done is correct. It wouldn't surprise me if it's based on the best model we've developed ourselves, uh, distributed, and how we are. And then they put on, uh, tra- traffic distribution, and stuff like that, and the traffic generation. But it's as simple as that really, best model, we, we, we've signed that off.
Thank you, and the, um, that was response. Um, and thank you for all of the officers for, you know, to spend this official time, um, for the, and, um, anyone else have any further questions, we can raise them via further presence that might be in the future.
Do I, do I get the opportunity of asking my question?
Um, and I want to bring out, we need to draw the, to close, um.
For two minutes of the time today, are we going to suffer fifty years of construction? So what's wrong with two minutes?
It's not my time. This is for everyone in the room. I think maybe if there is an officer that would be willing to speak to you after this meeting, um, then, you know, that's what, that's what, they can do.
I'm quite happy to support all your, uh, so.
Okay, yeah, and also again, who's willing to speak to you, um, so good day. I will ask the rest of the room to, uh, just thank you for your time, everyone.